Want him not to be here.
This is true.
All right.
In my opinion.
Here we go.
Is the sound on? This last night it wasn't.
Oh, really?
Really? Oh, that's great.
Well, I went to YouTube today and it wasn't... I couldn't get the sound to work and everything else. All other sound worked with other...
Okay. I think we're all set. Okay, I'll call this special meeting to order for Thursday, March 29th, 2018. All Sukkum are in attendance. We'll start with public participation.
Yeah, I would just hope in the future that if you have a special meeting the night before, if you have a roomful of the public here, as you did last night, that at least you would post a special meeting on the doors, as they have in the past, so that people are aware that there's one coming. They see it on Facebook at 9:30 this morning, and I'm glad at least you took that initiative. People wouldn't have known that there was a meeting because I don't shut the town website every day because I communicate it should be out there. So I would just ask that that be done. And I also would ask that in the future that all board members are given the same courtesy as others so that if anybody's going to be late in the future by nine minutes, that they get a phone call, as Steve got today. Thank you.
Okay. Further public participation?
Yes.
Sarah Muska, 25 Maple Avenue. I just, I agree with Marie. We found out at the end of our Board of Finance meeting last night that there would be a special meeting this morning. But it would have been nice to be able to let more people be aware of it because it didn't go on the Facebook until mid-morning this morning, so I'm just...
Okay.
Great.
All right. So we'll take the agenda items out of order. We'll first do the approval of the resolution for the Warehouse Point grant. You want to talk about that at all? Laurie, or?
I guess. So basically, the town has received a transit-oriented development responsible growth grant for over $23,800 to do some studies in Warehouse Point, store management plan, and update of zoning regulations and densities for that area. In so doing, in order to get the monies, the Board of Selectmen has to do a resolution stating that they understand what the ramifications are and responsibilities, and that they reach the 10% match, which I believe you agreed to last time, and it's also been approved by the Board of Finance. So basically, it's just you just need to read the resolution into the record.
Okay. So I'll make the motion because I have it in front of me. I authorize the First Selectmen to execute and file such application with the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development to provide such additional information to execute such other documents as may be required to execute and assist agreement with the State of Connecticut for the statute state financial assistance if such an agreement is offered, to execute any amendments, discussions, and revisions thereto, and to act as the authorized representative of the Town of East Windsor. Is there a second?
Second.
Point of order. Is it appropriate for the First Selectmen to authorize himself additional power?
I say it is. I think the First Selectmen can make any motion as well as any other member of the Board of Selectmen.
Including granting the office more power?
Including this resolution.
Do you have a copy of the resolution? All I have is the first page.
It's actually the...
Yeah, this is what...
Oh, so that's not included in our package?
Well, I think it is.
It should have been.
I just have the resolution.
Yeah, that's the only page I have.
It was in the package last night.
What?
Sorry, Andy, you're looking at the only page that I have.
Yeah, this is...
Yeah, it's the same thing. I just moved this up.
Where is what you read on this page?
Number two. I just... Hereby, this is what it would be.
Can I see what the motion is, please?
Yes. What I did is I said, "I authorize the..." And then I said, "First Selectmen," I just read that.
So this is the resolution. So basically, all of this should be read into the...
Yeah, it's the whole thing.
It's the whole thing that needs to be read into.
Okay.
Sorry.
So why wouldn't it be appropriate for the First Selectmen, who's the boss anyway, to oversee this?
The issue isn't whether or not it's appropriate for him to oversee it. The issue is whether or not it's appropriate for him to grant himself additional powers.
So what is your solution?
That any one of the four of us be the maker of the motion?
Okay.
And that's your only problem?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. So, and I guess what we should do is read this entire thing that says, "Whereas pursuant to Public Act 1498, Section blah, blah, blah," and read all three parts. Do I have a volunteer?
I'll do it. Not the best reader in the world, but I'll do it. Get the job done here. Instead of arguing over petty-ass shit, you know?
Okay.
Want me to go out there and read it, or do I do it right here?
Right here. You're gonna read from there all the way down there, then we'll slide to the page.
All right. Here we go. Best I can.
Start with the first whereas.
I know, I'm just looking at it a little bit. Now, therefore...
Nope.
Not, you want me to start there?
Whereas. Second, first one.
This one up here, the whole nine yards.
Yep.
Okay. "Whereas pursuant to Public Act 14-98, Section 2D, the Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development through the power granted by the Office of Policy and Management, OPM, is authorized to extend financial assistance for projects under the Responsible Growth Incentive Fund program. And whereas it is desirable and in the public interest of the Town of East Windsor, make an application to the State for $123,800 in order to undertake the Warehouse Point Village revitalization program project and to execute an assistance agreement. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the Board of Selectmen, one, that it is contingent of the condition... What's that?
Cognizant.
Cognizant, okay. Of the conditions and... What's that word?
Prerequisites.
Pr... I'm having a hard time saying now. Okay, you said it. "Including the match obligations for the state financial assistance imposed by Public Act 15-1, Section 32A, two of the Connecticut General Assembly and the guidelines of the Responsible Growth Incentive Fund program. Two, the filing of an application for state financial assistance by the Town of East Windsor in the amount not to exceed $123,800 is hereby approved that First Selectmen is directed to execute such application and the Connecticut Department of Economic Community Development to provide such additional information to execute such other documents and may be required to execute an assistance agreement with the State of Connecticut for state financial assistance if such an agreement is offered to execute any amendments, decisions, and revisions thereto, and to act as the authorized representative of the Town of East Windsor. Three, that it agrees to fulfill the 10% local cash match as presented in the application submitted by the Town of East Windsor to OPM in response to the competitive request for applications for the TOD and Responsible Growth Incentive Fund program, and to compete, complete the project as specified in OPM's award letter and scope of work."
Thank you, Steve. Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, you can't second it.
Okay.
I'll second it.
There you go.
All right, discussion.
Second.
Hearing, Madan?
Yeah, I'd like to just ask Laurie. Laurie, can you tell what's going to happen with this money?
Yes, we're going to do, first, we're going to do, excuse me, a stormwater management plan so we can figure out what to do with the stormwater in Warehouse Point with increased density and the fact that, and impervious coverage, and the fact that we already have...
And that stormwater is in what area?
Warehouse Point.
But the whole, the whole Route 5 corridor and all the way down to the downtown area?
Well, no. It's, the Warehouse Point by the POCV is now defined to the north, to the Enfield line, to the west, to the Connecticut River, and then where the highway intersects the town.
Okay.
So we have the blue ditch and the...
So where Route 91 crosses, crosses over the river? Is that it?
Pardon?
Where Route 91 crosses over the river?
Yes, yes.
Anything north and west of 91.
Right. So, and we have the blue ditch and the Connecticut River already causing flooding issues in that area. So if we increase the density and impervious coverage is done, then we need to know how we're going to deal with those stormwaters. So we're going to do a stormwater management plan and then put at work on complete street design regulations, architectural guidelines, and new zoning regulations to allow different types of uses and density of housing.
To do this, you'll have to hire a civil engineering concern to...
A planning professional, yes. Well, and they will work with a civil engineer to do the stormwater management plan.
So when you get all done with this, you'll have a plan including some drawings of where the drainage should be and where it'll enter the Connecticut River and so on?
Right.
For that part of the water?
And methods to take care of those waters. You might have to detain them or get them off, you know, into the river as fast as possible. It will really depend on what they come up with. Maybe do some more impact development, green infrastructure, bioswales, or rain gardens, things like that, that help retain the water for a little while.
What consideration will be given to the fact that South Water Street floods every so often? Any?
It will certainly be taken into consideration. You know, the plan that we would like to see is that South Water Street become more of a rail trail type of a situation. We're talking about maybe doing a bike way down there? Maybe making that a linear park along all of South Water Street? Of course, you know, there are some houses along the river there, so...
Would the plan outline how to make that area usable for commercial development, for example? We've talked before about...
On South Water Street? I don't think we would propose commercial development on that road.
Is it something pretty dramatic has to happen before that could happen? Like a wall or something, a diaphragm?
Right, but I don't think that there's any intention of making that commercial. I think that, if anything, it'll remain residential.
We've talked about the village in conjunction with the Windsor Locks Project becoming an area where you'd have boutiques and, you know, and that kind of development.
Right.
But not in that area.
Not on South Water Street. More on Main and Bridge, and maybe in that little northwest corner around there, like behind Main Fish Market. There's actually quite a bit of land that could be developed there. We've even proposed maybe adding another little road between North Water and Main. So that came about with the TOD study that the Department of Transportation did for us, which we're still waiting for the final report, but...
One last question, and I'll go away.
Go away.
The question is, if you put a cul-de-sac in there, like you're...
The roundabout.
Roundabout, like they're talking about. What does that do to this study? Is the study going to consider the fact that that could be there and it will probably raise some in order to make it more accessible and usable by large trucks?
It will take into consideration that that is a possibility.
Will it in any way encourage that as a possibility?
Not necessarily encourage it. We'll just take reality and try to work with it.
But it can't be ignored.
Whatever reality ends up being.
But that can't be ignored or else the...
No, we wouldn't ignore it, but we certainly need to...
The plan would be kind of, you know, useless without having given proper consideration of that.
Of course.
To Andy's point, is there any connection between the grant and the potential for the roundabout?
Connection?
Is there, will it be funding any type of site work or art and engineering that they need to do?
No, 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 no. This is strictly to redevelop Warehouse Point in conjunction with the TOD across the river. Whether or not the Department of Transportation, I don't use too many acronyms, whether or not the Department of Transportation requires this roundabout or not has nothing to do with it. However, if it is required or if it's not required, the design studies will be based on that. We're just, as far as, like, where we're going to put complete streets, where we're going to put the sidewalks, or how far away they'd be, or where crosswalks would be. I mean, we're going to base the study on what reality will be, but we don't know what that reality will be, roundabouts or not.
That decision will be made in a vacuum, away from this?
Right, right.
So we're making, we're doing this study, and that $123,000 will be eaten up by the engineers in about a week. Okay? So this money isn't going to go anywhere. It's not a lot of money. And we're going to do this stormwater study on things that we don't even know what's going to be built there yet, or how many more parking lots will be built there yet, how many more buildings will be built there. As far as the roads, Route 140 and Main Street that crosses it there, those roads are never going to change. Not going to change. I mean, yeah, it's beautiful, it's a grant, but it's not going to, it's not going to go very far, that kind of money. They'll eat it right up. And then the other comment that I had made in the past, and you kind of talked a little bit about it here, is I don't know what we're doing about that roundabout. I don't want to fight it.
I agree.
I don't want it in our town. They're running their trucks in our town, which should never happen. And the only reason why I think we're getting this money is to tease us to forget about the roundabout. That's my opinion. They're throwing money at us for this ridiculous study, in my opinion, so that we'll forget the roundabout and let it happen. We should do everything we can to stop them because, I'm going to tell you what's going to happen. I know we're getting awful, but I want to say this. Those trucks are going to come across that road, that bridge, which is going to wear that bridge out even faster where it never did before. Instead of going around that roundabout and heading back across, they're going straight up through Warehouse Point, and they're going to hop 91 up the street.
Because why wouldn't?
That's what I would do. I wouldn't go back around and go back over those tracks.
Because why wouldn't you?
This is ridiculous, what they're proposing, and that's my statement. That's another issue, though, isn't it, entirely? Dealing with the roundabout?
Probably, but maybe not. But following up on Steve's point, which I think is a good one, is that this $123,000, is that, is that the total cost of whatever work is going to be associated with that? Or will the town be liable for anything beyond the scope of $123,000?
We're liable for the 10% match, which is...
$12,000.
Yeah.
So if, so the total project is going to cost $135,000?
Laurie, one comment, for what it's worth. When I was on the River Heritage Committee, before it became a commission, we looked at the river park that's in there now. I had a friend in the Civil Engineering Department at UConn, and they came in and they drew a, did a lot of work, you know, tens of hours, maybe over 100 hours of engineering work. They defined a park for us with overreaching decks that went out toward the river so you could look up and down the river and so on. It was really quite well done. We went to the State to get money. We needed something like a quarter million dollars. I don't know if you remember this or not, but they were willing to give us like $68,000, and that's what we got. And because of the difference, we finally just had, Len and his gang, Mick, what is there currently, using some of what UConn did. But UConn's a resource that you might be able to tap into, you know, at no cost. Now, I don't know those people anymore at all, but I could do some looking and see if I could find somebody who would be willing to, you know, kick in their time. UConn does that on municipal projects sometimes.
Absolutely. Good covering. So I just wanted to say that when the grant was submitted, there is a breakdown of the costs associated with it. So the engineering cost was only about $30,000 or so. So the rest of it is not going to be just wasted on engineering. It's going to be utilized for fighting and to redesign.
So you've gotten quotes by these firms that, what they're going to charge. But Steve, there's no shovels in the ground. We'll have to wait and see, I guess. It's just paper. We're going to have to wait and see.
So if I understand this, and doing this stormwater, just in anticipation of increased stormwater, right, is the purpose of this whole thing? So there must be a plan that you have, or somebody has, that says, increasing stormwater is caused by surfacing. You're putting cement, or you're putting...
Right, impervious coverage.
Okay. It is no longer being absorbed by the ground. So there must be a plan of where this all is so that you would know where you're going to put, how much stormwater there will be, correct? And does that plan take into consideration? Is that plan, I guess, abut as part of where they think that roundabout is going to be?
I don't know. We haven't done the plan. We need to do the study. So the roundabout, whether the roundabout comes or not, this plan will go forward, and...
No, I understand that, but it's the part that if the plan has surfacing in that area for sidewalks and, you know, other things that are there, then that has...
A direct impact on the storm.
You know what I'm saying?
I see your point.
Yeah, so that in order to do the study, there's going to be a plan to say, we're going to put a sidewalk, we're going to put a parking lot, we're going to put a building, you know, something that's going to generate more surface water to get to them, for the engineers to study that. We have that, right?
No, that, we don't have that currently. That's what this will be. This is more of a matter of coming up with a plan as to how to deal with any increase for current waters. And part of that is coming up with methods, maybe onsite, to retain the water, detain the water, infiltrate it, or push off.
But to know what the quantity is and where it's coming from, there should be some kind of a plan now that says we're putting this much surface coverage here, there, wherever it is, that will increase stormwater by X percent.
Decrease. We want to decrease the stormwater.
We want to decrease it.
Well, but it'll increase the stormwater by putting the surfacing again. So you want to take the water, see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Right, so we're coming up with a plan to contend with those issues.
Okay.
That's kind of what this will do. It'll say, okay, we're probably going to increase impervious coverage. How are we going to deal with the stormwater? What methods are we going to utilize?
So that's the other $90,000, is what you're saying? Engineers getting 30?
I don't remember whether it was 30, 38, whatever.
Just as a roundabout.
So the other part is going to be coming up with the zoning and design criteria and increased density for residential and housing types.
Mm-hmm.
Tie into the transitory and to the government.
So we need a vote here?
Yeah, we're discussing. Any more discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Taking the matter of order again, we'll...
Thanks, Laurie.
Thank you.
Approve the sale of 76 Depot Street. And if I may make the motion, I'll move to South, 76 Depot Street, map 99, block 54, lot 07, to the American Rehab LLC for $55,000 and send it to a town meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Is that a foreclosure?
Yes.
Yes. And...
That's the house with the garage and everything falling down behind it and all that?
Yes, yeah.
Agreement on the right.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And I think that's a good price.
Okay.
Further discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And now, for the first one. Appointment of Amy O'Toole as town treasurer. So again, I'll make a motion. I move to appoint Amy O'Toole as town treasurer pending successful completion of pre-employment physical drug screening and signing of the employment agreement.
Second.
Discussion. Jason?
The copy that was included in our package appears to be the old one. New one was provided with comments and suggestions from Pullman and Comley. Which one are we voting on?
We're voting on the old one.
We're not incorporating any of those suggested changes.
That's correct.
Why?
Because I think that we've kind of jerked Amy around enough, changing the contracts. And also, I read all of what this person from Pullman and Comley, Zachary, said, and they were suggestions, but nothing he suggested would affect the contract. And also, that contract was similar to the, the initial thing, was the contract that we have for all unaffiliated employees. Len Norton has that contract, and others have that contract. Amanda has it. So I made the motion, and I think we should go forward. I think we risk losing Amy if we jerk her around. And I think it's a very valid contract that we have. And I appreciate the comments, and I think Zachary did a very good job. But I think we have a good contract the way it reads, and he kind of, in my opinion, said that.
Well, I think that there's, on page one, the comment by the attorney, is this person exempt or non-exempt? That's a very significant issue.
Yes, it's a very significant issue.
I would say they'd be exempt.
Yes, they're exempt. They're not in union.
Exempt?
That doesn't mean that. It just means that they're exempt from the FLSA.
That doesn't mean that. It just means that they're exempt from the FLSA Act. So, that would mean that they don't get any overtime. The overtime will still apply to them.
Okay.
But they're also saying, you know, questioning that thirty-five hours.
Yep.
That there's not, if somebody's exempt, there's not a set hour, a set work week hours to get the job done.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's an issue.
The contract keeps saying with, sorry, with flexibility so that it's thirty-five hours, but if she does work any, over that, she would get comp time for it. So, it's, most of our contracts for unexempt employees say that they get thirty-five hours a week with comp time.
And, and is it a comp time accrual at a one-to-one, one-and-a-half-to-one? What's the accrual rate?
After forty hours a week, it's one-and-a-half.
What is it before forty hours a week?
Just one-to-one.
Okay. What's the cap then?
The comp time?
Yeah.
Um, we actually don't have a policy on it.
We don't have, we don't have a policy on capping of-
Not for unaffiliated employees.
Do we have one for, is it included in the bargaining unit contracts for?
Some bargaining unit contracts do have caps. Some of them are different. I think one of them might be forty, one of them might-
Forty days or forty hours?
Forty hours. Um, I think one of them might be twenty-eight.
Hours?
Hours, yes.
Is there a requirement in your case or in Lenning's case, as the two examples that are operating already under this contract, for preapproval of overtime or of comp time?
Usually by the first selectman. So, we would have to get approval. So, if we had a meeting, this selectman, the first selectman would know that we had a meeting at night and we recorded on our time sheet.
So, you completed time sheet?
Mm-hmm.
So, Lenning completed time sheet?
Yes.
Amanda would know more than me.
And I don't see how they're exempt.
Uh, to keep track, that's really time tracking.
I, 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 I thought-
For exempt from getting overtime.
Thought it was, and I, I stand corrected. I thought exempt would be meaning they're not in a union, but I, I-
No, that's unaffiliated.
Okay.
Or exempt from the FLSA.
If this person is exempt, if it's anything like a private sector, I would tell people, we got a job to do, we got a contract, go do it. Don't bother me with how much time it's gonna take you. I'm not, I'm not interested in that. And so, the, you know, that sentence that they struck out with thirty-five hours, I, I think should be struck out. It's meaningless.
I agree.
Well, I think she understands, in discussions we've had, that if she worked an eight-hour day and then, in a, or a seven-hour day, and then went and had a meeting at night, that would be comp time. That meeting would be comp time. And she could take that time off at another point when she felt it was, it wouldn't interfere with her work.
How much is allowed to accumulate and roll over year to year?
Um, I don't know. It's encouraged not to build up comp time.
So, like I said, we don't have a policy, but it's, we generally ask that they use it a year from the date they started accruing it.
And is there somebody who keeps track of when that accrual occurs?
No, other than our time sheets, other than it being recorded on our time sheets. The treasurer's office sees it, but they don't actually enter it into anything. They just track it on their time sheets.
So, is there some computer record that say this person has X hours of comp time?
Currently, no.
So, there seems to be no aspect of use it either. It's, it's use it or keep it.
Yeah.
Right, right now, yes.
So, that line that deals with thirty-five hours, that's in all the other contracts we have with, with people?
I believe so.
The unaffiliated, it all says thirty-five hours with comp time for nightly meetings or any, over the thirty-five and any given.
That's a, an unfamiliar use of an exempt employee's method of being, you know, enumerated for, for work they've done. They get a salary and the job is here and you finish it up.
Well, I, I agree with what you're saying, but it also is, is the way that our contracts read, so.
But what's odd to me is that, that we've had these contracts. Who put that together? Like, is that Pullman and Comley?
That would be an interesting question to answer.
And that now they're, now they're, they're saying, that's not right. That's how I read this.
That's how I'd read it too.
So, in my opinion, we, we need to, or you need to get in touch with this attorney, this is my, get in touch with the attorney and say, we have contracts with this person, this person, okay, and this is what the contract says, okay, and I read it. Now, you're saying that this is an issue, okay. Where are we with this? What is the right answer? Because it's by law, whether somebody's exempt or not. That's not, you know, somebody's opinion. That's a legal issue.
So, I, I think there's a, a more specific issue here than, than the more general point that you're bringing up, which is I agree with as well. But that, just because we have two other contracts in place with individual employees that contains this language, does not bind us to have that language included here.
It should be right.
If we think, yeah, exactly right. If we think this is, this is bad from a policy perspective, we should fix it. We shouldn't say that, that, well, we're doing it wrong in two other places, so let's keep doing it wrong. That's just-
Doesn't make it more right by any more rule?
No, no. I would, I would like to take that.
That's my, that's my feeling also. We got, we got a reading from our attorney and their question about whether it's exempt or non-exempt is one that I'm reasonably familiar with in the private sector. And that, that sentence would not stand up in the private sector. Like I said before, if you're, if you're an exempt employee, you do the job, regardless of how many hours it takes you. That's the job. Yet, if I got comp time from, from Hamilton, I've been retired for thirty-one years. Hell, I still be getting comp time.
Yeah, I know what you mean.
So, do you want me to take out the sentence that says, employee shall perform her duties based on her best ability under the direction of the first selectman? Oh, that's, that's one, that's the next sentence. Employee shall work thirty-five hours per week and take an unpaid one-hour lunch each day. So, that's the sentence you want removed?
Yes, I would buy it.
All right.
Someplace along here, a legal firm also asked whether the status of whether that is an exempt or a non-exempt position should be studied. And I, I don't know. If you're, if you're satisfied it's an exempt position, then I think we take that out and go on.
Okay.
If you're not sure whether it's exempt or non-exempt.
I think, like I said, I, I want, I don't wanna lose Amanda and I, not Amanda, Amy and, or Amanda for that matter, but I, I think if we take that out, she'll, she'll probably agree.
On that being that.
So, the, the terms of the contract seem to contradict themselves in, in points. Well, first of all, before we get to that, there was another, another suggestion about separability by mutual consent, which would waive the obligations of either party to, to have the sixty-day payout. And along that, so, I'm gonna go point by point through this. Under section two D, the employees agree to remain in the exclusive employ of the town for the duration of this agreement unless approved otherwise by the board of selectmen. We contradict that later by, by specifically allowing her to maintain another part-time job, which is a standard we already criticized an existing employee for doing when, when they were reclassified. Melissa Maltese was, it was made a point that if she was given this particular role, that she, she should not be coaching, which is essentially a part-time job. We're now allowing for, and in spite of the terms of the contract, for the town treasurer to maintain a second treasurer's position in another, in another fire district. So, that is a conflict in and of itself in the contract. The language is in conflict with each other.
Did the attorney point that out? I don't have that copy.
I have a second copy.
Do you have this thing, Jason?
Uh, I have it electronically. I have it electronically.
Okay.
Did they point that out?
I don't think they pointed it out.
They didn't point that out. They did add a, a new D in there.
That's the separability piece. That's the separability piece I was talking about.
Yeah.
And their, their language would add a new D. And so, subsection two D would become, the parties may terminate this agreement by mutual consent at any time.
Correct.
And the note is that this is simply catch-all language that makes clear that the parties can terminate the agreement by mutual consent if they desire to do so.
Right.
That's, boilerplate, is, is how that would be termed.
That's not terribly significant, but it is, it is a good addition, I think.
It is a good addition, especially when you, when you start talking about the, in the next section, the lump sum cash payment equal to sixty days of salary in either of the following circumstances. The board of selectmen terminates the town treasurer before expiration of a force said term of employment and the board fails to give sixty days written notice. And upon expiration of the contract, if we don't renew it, we also owe her sixty days' pay.
Yep.
Which is twelve weeks. That's, that's hefty. But in, in section three A, one, this Zachary person suggested that we add, without having cause to do so, in terms of the termination language, which means that if we terminate her for cause, we would not be responsible for paying her for twelve, twelve weeks' pay.
That's correct.
That's a good protection.
Yes, it is.
That's a pretty standard boilerplate thing.
Yeah. If, if we have a reason to fire you and we do, we're not gonna pay you for it.
That's what any contractor I ever seen says.
So, can we include that language? The board of selectmen terminates the town treasurer without having cause to do so before expiration of a force said term of employment? You guys okay with that?
No, now, wait a minute. If you're saying that the, a board of selectmen terminates her without cause?
With cause.
With cause. But that's, that's, what does it say here? In the event the employee is terminated for good cause prior to the expiration of the agreement, then the town shall have no obligation to pay the payment designated in this paragraph.
Well, we'll get to that part in a second because it was, it was suggested that that, those whole bullet points come out because that also is in conflict with the, with the charter?
And I think we're getting into too much detail. I think if we rip this to pieces on, on that, I think that this, I've read it, Amy's, Amy's read it. I think there's, this is a good contract. I think by starting to tear it up, you're, you're delaying the whole thing. And the reason we had this special meeting is Amy's gonna start April second. That's the next working day. And, and I want her to, to start and sign this contract. And she won't sign it if we tear it to pieces, so.
If I was her, I wouldn't sign it if we tore this to pieces either. This is a sweet contract for her. This is, this is, if she can negotiate for us half as good as she negotiated for herself, this is an exceptionally good contract for her.
She's an exceptionally good person and, and as an employee, we, we definitely would value, she would pay for her work. Every person I've talked to, her references have raved about her. Our auditor recused himself for interviewing her because he said he knew her both personally and as a professional, because he audits Canton too, and he said she's fantastic. People who have worked with her say she's been fantastic. And I think this is a very valid contract. We'll take out that sentence, but to start messing around with it the way you're saying, and the, the lawyer who reviewed it, his, what he says is good, but just like you, you said, this is a, a, a good contract.
No, I said this is a good contract for her.
For her. And, but the minute we change it so it's a better contract for us, she's gonna know it. And she, we've jerked her around enough. So, I, I think that, I, I just think we shouldn't go into that ripping it to pieces the way you're suggesting.
I think you gotta realize too, what are, she's gonna be getting paid, what, ten, twenty, twenty-five thousand less than the other towns around us?
She's gonna get a hundred and six thousand dollars a year with three percent in three-year warranty.
That's right. Other towns, it's a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty thousand.
But that doesn't mean, Steve, we shouldn't have a good contract.
So, for how much do you wanna rip apart?
That, that doesn't mean we shouldn't have a good contract. And, and the comments, you know, made by Pullman and Comley, they are decent kind of, and none of them, to me, look like they are something that she would say, I'm gonna walk away from this. They really aren't.
They're not controversial.
You know, this, this one that we're talking about right now, the revision to three A two, it's just a clarification.
All right. So, let's, let me-
And it, it deletes a whole bunch of specific stuff. It is, you know, it's just stuff.
Yeah.
Three A two. Well, if you're gonna, if you're gonna be looking at three A two and adopting the, the revision suggested by Pullman, you have to adopt three A one because that's the part that protects the town.
Yeah, yeah.
You, you, really, you can't do one without the other.
I agree.
These, these aren't things that are anywhere considered to be a deal breaker. It's, in my opinion, bon part. These are things that the attorney's clarified, it's crossed in the eyes, dotted in the eyes, crossed in the, and, and providing some clarification as to, you know, good cause that was taken, good was taken out, right?
Right, because cause is actually enumerated in the charter.
Yeah. And so, I've never heard of a contract that said good cause. It's either cause or it's not, you know?
And, and in our charter, in our charter, it's called-
Pardon for bad cause.
And in our charter, it's cause. It should be consistent.
Okay. All right. So, you want-
We wanna adopt Pullman's recommendations in three A one and two.
Three A one and three A two.
And three A two, Bob, it's got a lot of verbiage in it, but it, it's just better verbiage than we had there before. She should have no objections to that.
Okay.
It says the same thing in a more clear manner. She should-
And let me just emphasize, Andy, you said it says the same thing.
I'm sorry?
You said it says the same thing. And when my, and I will make these changes, but if she walks away from this job because we've changed this document to say the same thing, then shame on us.
That's true.
So, in section three, or three C, in the event the town treasurer voluntarily resigns his or her position with the town before expiration of a force said term of his or her employment, then the employee shall give at least sixty days' written notice in advance to the first selectman unless the parties otherwise agree. Now, prior, it says that if, if we, if we sever the agreement with her without sixty days' written notice, we have to pay her for sixty days' pay. If she separates with less than sixty days' notice, what is the recourse for the town?
Um.
What, my question is, why do we have to pay if we provide less than sixty days' notice and there isn't some sort of, and I'm not saying she has to, she should have to pay, but why is there some sort of corollary in the back, forfeiture of accrued time or something?
It would have been nice if we had, well, I don't think, I, I think what we did was give her a contract and, and said, this is the contract we'd like it assigned when we had the interview. And she went home and changed it. So, we had a view of the way she'd like it. And we went back and forth and ended up with the contract that, that you had in your package. And then the lawyer reviewed it and the clock is ticking. And fortunately, he, he got this review back to us yesterday. That's why I could make the meeting today. Or maybe it was Wednesday. I'm not sure. I asked it for yesterday. And after reading it, I came to the conclusion, kinda like Andy said, that it says the same thing. The lawyer can say it better, but it's the same contract. And, and I'm sure Amy would sign the contract that I put out. And if we start tearing it to pieces, I don't mind taking out that one sentence, but I strongly object to tearing this thing to pieces. And, and I think we're gonna lose, you know, we're gonna be dollar-wise and, or, or, and I should say pound, penny-wise and dollar foolish. If we lose Amy because we wanna have the words better than they are, that's foolishness.
Well, the words need to be better than they are so that the town's interests are protected. And, and the question isn't on Amy and whether or not she's capable for the job or her references check out. I mean, in this case, we actually got to meet her and she was very nice. And she seemed to be very capable. And she checked all of the boxes that we need. However, we are the contracting power for the town. And so, we have an obligation to make sure that when we're entering into contracts, that they are in the town's best interests.
I think that point, Jason, I- I think at that point, Jason, I'm-
I think you're right.
Above the sixty days, you know, that, you know, we have to pay if we don't give her sixty days' notice. You know, contracts that I've seen, that's generally what they are. There's not a penalty on the other side, because you're the employer, you know, that you're- you have to do that. And I think at the end of the day, you know, I have no concerns about her leaving. And so it's, to me, it's like a- it's not a territory, because it'll never happen. So rather going fishing down that road. Is there anything else that-
I don't know how you penalize a person for walking away. I don't know what you do.
My point isn't so much that we penalize the person for walking away as we lessen the penalty for us in the other event.
If we terminate?
I'm saying sixty days is- twelve weeks severance is pretty generous. I'm not sure that the private sector is doing that these days. I know the state is. So I'm just saying, like, there is not an equilibrium there.
At that level, there would be.
Well, I would like to say is, if Bob negotiated this, and I think we should stand behind him in that particular issue. I really do. Do I agree that it's a very generous thing? You're damn right I do, because in my business, people came in and said, "You're all done. Pick up your good- your stuff. The guard is waiting for you with your box to go out the door." So is it a good deal for her? Yes, it is. But I don't think we should make her a deal breaker. I really don't.
Okay, I'll move on.
On the outside, Andy, that, you know, someone at that level, you would pay sixty days, usually six months.
Yep.
At that level.
That doesn't happen in government. You get paid up for whatever you have to do.
Thank God.
Thank God.
You know, not to any bearing at all. When I looked at United Technologies, they gave me ten years of separation. Big bucks.
When I leave the state of Connecticut, they'll pay me for my accrued vacation time.
Yeah.
That's it.
I understand. That's why it's apples and oranges.
Yeah, government versus private sector isn't always not apple-torn. The salary piece. So we're locking in three percent increases for two years without any type of a performance review.
There is a spot here where it talks about performance.
Yep.
And I had a comment there. And I was saying, "Bob, we should have written goals that we can measure her on."
We can do that.
So that we know if she's done a good job or a bad job, and we can talk to her about that, and we agree on that.
I agree.
But so in the contract, it allows us to give her more than a three percent per year increase if she is exceeding those goals, but absolutely no less than a three percent. I'm saying, like, if you're going to do- that's a lot of money.
Yep.
So we- it is permitted- and I can find the section, if you give me a second. There is a section in here- I'll miss it now. That allows us to go beyond- oh, "The town may increase set base salary in the amounts and to such extent as the Board of Selectmen may determine is desirable to do so based on the employee's achievement of such goals and objectives as the first selectman may establish and/or supervise performance as evidenced in the employer's annual performance evaluation." So there is a requirement in Section 5 that the first selectman perform an annual performance appraisal.
Yep.
And that we may be able to give her more than three percent, but we're locking in as an absolute automatic three percent cola regardless of performance. If our bond rating goes down to jump, she's still getting three percent.
Yep. That, except for the three percent floor, that is not untypical.
I don't disagree with the three percent floor, though.
If I had someone who did a good job, I could reward them. If they did a bad job, I couldn't take their base salary away.
I'm not saying take the base salary away. I'm saying that the automatic three percent base increase, irregardless of performance, is steep. Amanda, do you know of any other town employee with three percent guarantees? No?
Union employees have it.
Not three percent? No, it varies. Some are two point two five, two point five. This probably means-
In your time here, have you ever seen a contract with a three percent per M?
But then again, Jason, over these years that I've been here and stuff, you know, did you guys ever do a performance evaluation on those that were exempt to know?
I have no idea. The Board of Selectmen wouldn't do that. The CEO would. Or the department head, depending. But it wouldn't be us.
You weren't aware of-
Linda Roberts, that was the last time Denise reviewed them.
I know Denise was trying to get them into bargaining unit contracts, and that was like an absolute non-starter in negotiations.
Yeah, but that's contract. I'm talking about it sounds.
I have no idea.
Again, I'd like to frame this-
I think we should do that. I'm just not sure why we don't.
We should do it, no question. I'd like to frame this in this manner. In effect, we're giving Amy three thousand dollars a year escalation in her wages. Round number.
Yeah, it's sixty-five hundred over two fifty.
Yeah. It's what the town, Bob negotiated. It's there.
Waiting is there.
Well, it's here.
Yes.
It's here. He negotiated it. Would have rather had two percent sure. This three percent, that, I don't think is terrible either way. And other towns are paying more money. And we're in competition with other towns. This lady appears to have good credentials. We all agree on that. Has talent. She had some ideas she laid on us, which might even save the town more than three K a year. It might just be a good investment in her.
But the black signs are going to be coming out, and we're going to be living with two percent budgets. And we're locking in a three percent rate.
We are indeed. That's all true.
All right.
I'm personally happy with that. Dave, you-
I'm okay with it. I'm okay.
So I'll move on to Section 7, then. Paid time off. 7A says that on April 2nd, the town shall credit the employee with twenty days of vacation which will be available for immediate use. A previously scheduled unpaid three weeks will be granted from May 14th to- she talked about that during the new year's, I got no problem at all with that. Why are we both depositing twenty days of vacation instead of having them accrue like sick time accrues? And why are we doing it at twenty days instead of fifteen, which is what the sick time would be?
So we do accrue sick time, but what our treasurer's office does is she frontloads the vacation time. But if you were to use it and leave before you accrued it, you would actually owe the town that back. That's just past practice, what we've done. And the twenty days was just a bottom line of sheet.
How many do- how many days does Lenny get?
Depends on how long you've served.
How many days do you get?
I get ten.
You get ten?
For up until five years of service. After my completion of the fifth year, I'll get fifteen. That's how all the contracts are in.
And we're starting this one on four weeks. Now, if she- if the Barkhamston Volunteer Fire Department, Fire District, wherever else she works, were to say, "We want to hire you full-time. Can you start on May 1st?" Do we owe her for the twenty days that we're both depositing upfront?
No, because she wouldn't have accrued it yet. So it's- we're front-loading it. It's just a past practice how our treasurer's office frontloads the vacation. But if she were to leave and have used the vacation, then she would actually owe the town.
And what's the recovery mechanism available to the town for that?
I'm not sure. We have to check with finance.
So we don't know that we can get that money back?
But we would, in this case, get the money back. If she were to join us and took vacation and then left, she'd be obligated to pay us back that vacation?
Yes. I mean, it's not in that contract. That is how the finance, the treasurer's office does it. That's how they- anytime a situation like that has come up, that's helping with it.
So why are we escalating her vacation time like we do for other employees?
Because she's worked in prior jobs for a long time. We wanted to get her here. That's what I negotiated. That's kind of a condition under which she'd come. It doesn't, in a sense, cost the town, as far as budget-wise, money. It does mean that she doesn't have to put in as much time. She puts in one week less.
How much did we start offering?
I don't- should we discuss the negotiations in public?
Sure, the contract's out in public.
I'm not sure if we want to discuss negotiations with employees in public. I guess you can discuss the contract, and we are discussing the contract in minute detail.
Okay. In 7.3, this was another suggestion from Zachary, what's his name, that we strike out termination or. So the existing language says, "Accumulated vacation pay shall be granted to an employee in the event of termination or resignation." And to Charlie's point before about cause versus good cause, you're fired anyway. If we're going to fire you, there's going to be a reason for it.
But we should be consistent with the charter.
Yeah.
Cause versus good cause.
Oh, yes. Yeah, yeah, no argument. But the attorney is recommending that we strike termination or so that the line would read, "Accumulated vacation pay shall be granted to an employee in the event of resignation." So basically, if she's fired, she's fired.
Yep.
I think that's another protection for the town.
Do you see that being an issue, Bob?
Yeah. If she's accumulated vacation pay and she's fired, then we should give her vacation pay that she's accumulated. Do I miss something?
On top of the sixty days severance we're already giving her?
I think so.
Well, I think if she is- if she has accumulated- I understand this, if she's accumulated vacation times, that the issue? Okay.
And she's fired for cause?
Fired for cause. I think state labor would say that whatever they're due, you have to pay them.
Actually, I think you're probably right.
You have to pay them. Doesn't matter what you say.
I think that's true.
Yeah, that's not an option.
Because you actually own your vacation time. You own your PL days. You don't own your second, the employee does. Yeah, okay. That's a valid point.
So-
How many personal days?
Termination stays in?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I hadn't bought it from his perspective, but in context, that actually does make sense. How many personal days do town employees get?
Varies. Unaffiliated is that five. Supervisors get three. Clerics will get six, so.
Six? Wow. And we don't want to include anything about capping compensatory times or readdressing that. That comes up again in 7H.
I'm working on a comp time policy.
If you're working on a comp time policy, will that have to be negotiated with bargaining units that are able to accrue comp time? I think yes.
Definitely, but we cannot just make it applicable to unaffiliateds.
Snap the fingers.
Does that provide a cap?
Yes.
You happy?
As long as that policy materializes, yes. So 8B, now we're getting into life and health and medical insurance issues. Is it standard practice under the HSA for the town to assume ninety percent of the cost? That is standard?
For unaffiliateds, yeah. Some of the contracts are eighty-seven point five, and some are eighty-eight, but unaffiliateds, no.
Okay, so that's uniform.
Have you moved down beyond five?
I'm sorry?
Have you moved down to page five?
Yeah, I just looked at six.
How about H? That should be taken out, if we're going to take out that other-
Oh.
That other sentence.
Yeah, I think that's true for consistency. That would be true.
It's just another expression of that same thought.
Yeah, that same thought that's on page one.
Right.
Okay, let me get to that.
Page five, Bob. H, two-thirds way down on page. It deals with the thirty-five hour week.
Okay.
That's more of the same that was on page one.
You know, what would be wrong with saying here that the hours of operation are eight thirty to whatever it is?
I think for an exempt employee, Charlie, the hours of operation are whenever you have to be there and finish up at night to get the job done. That's just my opinion, if that's how I viewed it.
Yeah, I do, too, you know, except that I just think of the public, you know, they're expected to be here.
You can say standard work hours are here or there.
I would just take it out.
But, you know, exempt is, you do the job. You agree?
Yeah.
So H comes up?
Yeah.
Okay, on page five.
Yeah, so on top of page six, Section 8D. Amanda, is it also standard in affiliates for ninety percent dental? That is universal?
Yeah.
The defined benefit piece. This is a piece that we're trying to move folks away from a defined benefit, and we're now entering, what I'm guessing is, the third highest-paid employee in, on the town side, to a defined benefit with only a two percent match. That will be costly for the town.
What is the multiplier there, Jason?
I don't know.
It's one point seven five.
Okay.
And under those circumstances, probably that DB is better than the ones we negotiated with the clerical union. So DB is not expensive. Depending on how it plays itself out, and this is a very reasonable pension. And I think she would want more if we had to go into- and even you put forward hybrid plans where it seems to be appropriate. But to get it, if we wanted a five percent match, that wouldn't fly, I don't think. And this is no more expensive than that, so I totally disagree with you. I do agree that we're trying to get people off of DB, but the people who are on DB stay on DB, and so we're going to be-
It's for new employees only that are mine.
Right, I know.
She is a new employee.
So I realize she's a new employee, hopefully. But by putting her on this DB, there's going to be a lot of people that were not new employees a year ago that are going to be doing DB. So it's not- I think it fits right in very well. She's the treasurer, so she should be able to handle that pretty well.
So I'm just saying, I think that the- having a new six-figure employee at a two percent employee contribution on a DB is not a step forward in terms of trying to adjust to twenty-first century pension model.
Okay.
In Section 10, dues and subscriptions. Oh, actually, no, I don't think it's in Section 10. It's in-
Yeah, it says 10.
Yeah, but I'm looking for the compensation section. So, I'm sorry, going back to page three in Section 4A, where we outline the hundred and six thousand salary and the three percent increases per year. Pullman does suggest there that the Board of Finance must have a role in setting that, the annual increase per chart. That was one of the things that was actually outlined in Section 6, 6, 6.5?
On page seventeen of the charter, it gives Bob the authority to do this. Except that, it says that if we- if we have the- if it's within the budget, the last sentence- that whole paragraph says that Bob has the authority to do this. Last sentence says that he should go to the Board of Finance. Do you have it here?
To consult.
To consult. And then it says that it's acceptable for Bob to make this deal if it is within the annual budget. And Bob and I have talked about that, and it's within the annual budget, right, Bob?
Yes. But are we committing the Board of Finance to living with this in the outgoings?
Good question.
And does that conflict with the verbiages? So you're correct, 6-6D. The Board of Selectmen, in consultation with the Board of Finance, shall appoint a town- shall appoint a town treasurer who shall be qualified in blah, blah, blah. I don't see the piece about...
Are you on page 17?
Page 17 is not the right section. 17 talks about general powers of the first selectmen.
The authority of the first selectmen.
Like the bargaining chief contracting officer?
That's a paragraph.
That's the paragraph? Unless otherwise provided by law, the first selectmen as the chief executive and administrative officer of the town shall within, with the approval of the board of selectmen, have the authority entered into administer or terminate contracts, including but not limited to employment or collective bargaining agreements which obligate the town for any and all financial agreements within the approved annual budget. As the chief contracting officer, the first selectmen may delegate signature authority for purchase orders to department heads within the approved annual budget for selectmen's position. What am I reading wrong? Oh, you're saying that piece of it? So you're saying, okay, but what did Pullman suggest?
Well, they made comments about...
There was a specific one.
Yes, supporting the town for future obligation. But we do that with all the rest of the people that are in contracts, right?
Yeah, my view was, except for the number, there are escalators in every single member of the staff, and this escalator happens to be 3%.
Yeah.
So the question is, does Bob have the authority to hire her? And I believe that paragraph gives her the authority to do so, and...
Yeah, it does.
And from there on, we all, as a town, have to deal with how we deal with escalators, whether they're 1%, 2.5, or 3%.
That the future stuff that Pullman said in there, you know, what about the future?
So the section that they're talking about specifically? Nope, so this is 8-3, general provisions, chapter 8 is the finance section. No liability or expense to be incurred in excess of appropriation unless otherwise provided by this charter. No commission, board, or official shall incur any liability or expense by contract or otherwise for which the town shall be responsible that exceeds the appropriation set forth by it in the annual approved budget or for which there is no appropriation. Moreover, no money shall be expended without an appropriation.
Same words, Jason, as in that paragraph that it showed you. And, you know, Bob has looked at the thing, at the deal, and says that it is within the annual budget. Now you ask a good question about whether includes the escalator. It includes the escalator just like every other employee who has negotiated the contract, there's an escalator in there. Not only talking about whether it's, you know, 1.5%, 2%, 2.5%, or 3. It's only numbers. But I think the philosophy is consistent, and that is, as long as it's in the budget, he can hire her, or he or she. And then beyond that, it falls into the category of what happens in out years. And the out years are something that has to be dealt with on a budgetary basis by us, but mostly by the Board of Finance. Okay, as you said before, it's our job to come up with what's good for the town, and it's their job to make it fit a budget. I don't envy them their job, but that's what it is.
Do you either have it, and if the town approves it in the budget in subsequent years?
Or you're playoffs, right?
That's happened.
Yeah.
I've seen that happen. On page seven, there's an incident, are you there or not?
I'm on seven. Are you finding typos, because I have typos.
Yeah. And down at the bottom, Jason, there's a, they took out registered and left in certified mail.
Yeah.
That's probably the right thing to do, I don't know.
Oh, so you're talking about the Pullman suggestions, yeah?
Yeah, notices.
So earlier in that same page, section 15A, the very, very last sentence should be, there is an and missing just before duly. So the sentence should read, such terms and conditions of employment as are affixed pursuant to this section shall not be come effective unless reduced to writing by the first selectmen and duly authorized by the vote of the board.
Yep.
So that's a typo. There's another one in section 17, in the first line.
Yep.
Any and all notices required or permitted to be given.
Yep, take out B.
B should be included, it's omitted.
I'm sorry, you're right, B should be included.
I didn't get that.
I think we've done it, we've gone, we've done exactly what you didn't want to do. We piecemealed you to death, we've gone through the whole thing.
Have you gotten all the changes that we've talked about?
Okay.
They're not material. The only one is on that first one.
Yeah, the 35-hour per week.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that occurs in two places. H, 5, and page five on H, which is 7H, and then on the front page in section one. So I...
With this being an exempt position, I'm sure she understands that.
So with those two changes...
You don't think she's going to mind that at all?
I will...
We remember two.
The cause and just cause, I mean, good person for cause.
But I think we agree that they both said the same thing, that probably Pullman said it better, but we didn't think that that should be...
It should be cause every place, right? Cause every place, not good cause.
Okay, cause every place.
Cause every place.
That's great to the charter.
The changes we talked about?
It's not really a list, but I did jot them down, but...
I can note that the cause thing is by charter to tell her that.
I didn't really want, so I don't know if that means I have to change them.
And she, if it's in the charter, she'd run with that.
Yeah.
She is a, she's not going to...
Bob, do these changes cause you a lot of problems?
Only the big one, that by taking on page, starting on page two, in the termination, taking out the reasons for cause, and I think that I wouldn't want to be back at a corner. And as Andy said, they say the same thing, so I'd rather not make that change. I think, I think we're, in a sense, over-lawyering the whole thing.
It says the same thing. It more generalizes, however, you know, we've got a list of four, five, six specific issues. Now, she could later come, if we go after her.
Here's what I found on the web, we listed about these 26 specific issues.
I didn't violate any of those, whereas with Pullman and...
Yeah, I hear what you're saying, and I don't mind saying that giving her a choice of either contract. We make the changes that we specified on the 35 hours, the change register, certified to register, change everything to cause rather than good cause, I don't mind that, but that one major change, or at least a major in the sense that it's a lot of words, and I think I'd like to give her the option of reading both and choosing one.
I don't think that's on reason.
What? You get to pick the contract you're going to sign? That is...
Say it again.
You don't get to pick the, it's like, this is the contract, it's not, you get A or B, which do you prefer? That's like crazy.
Okay, if we don't want it crazy, then let's not give her the option. We'll stay with the changes of 35-hour a week in page five and one. We'll take out, we'll change register to certified to register, we'll change good cause or all, everything to cause, and we'll leave it that way, we won't give her a choice.
Let's go back to Jason's concerns.
So we're not going to do anything on the severability? We're not going to, so how about, I'm just going to do this simply, you guys can vote me down. I move to amend the motion to adopt the changes as discussed on the recording.
In vote?
Yes. She's got a recording, there's another, there's the YouTube, we have a member of the press here, it should be well documented, what the changes discussed were.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion?
Discussion on amending the motion.
Okay. I say we don't amend the motion, and, but I think we're going to have to amend the motion, but you said amend the motion to say...
To adopt the changes as discussed.
To adopt the changes as discussed. I don't, I don't think we should do that, so I don't think we should amend the motion to say that. I think we should amend the motion, though, and we'll have to make another amendment to make the changes for 35-hour weeks on page one and five, to change the certified to registered mail, and to change all good cause to the word cause. So that would be an amendment we'd have to make, but I don't think we should make this amendment. So I think we should vote no.
We shouldn't do it on which one?
So we shouldn't do it on Jason's amendment to...
We just talked about.
Jason wants to amend it just as it's, correct, Jason? Just as they've changed it?
I want to amend it based on the discussion that we've had and the changes that we've been making.
Oh, okay, all right.
Well, no, but I think Jason wants to include the changes...
Essentially presented by Pullman and Comley, plus the things we talked about.
He wants the changes by Pullman and Comley, and that certainly includes the changes in section three.
Yeah, I'm using theirs as a base and adopting the things that we've all talked about.
We agree to.
I'm not using theirs, I don't think we should use theirs as a base, I think we should use the one that was in the, the one that Amy and I agreed with, and modify the one that she has in her possession to be what we're concerned of. I don't think we should amend it as Jason says. I don't understand his amendment. It seems to be that he's amending it to say that we base it on Pullman's changes, which are numerous, and I don't think that we've discussed it.
I don't think so. I think what he's saying is amend it as we have discussed over the last hour and a half.
But, okay, let me say it this way, then. Would that amend anything in section three termination? Let me say it differently.
Yeah, with 3A.
Would we in...
And we would strike the bullet points? And just...
Yeah, I'm saying, don't strike the bullet points. I will agree that we can change the word good cause to cause, but other than that, I wouldn't amend it.
So cause is defined, I'm told, in the charter, and if you include the bullet points as presented, it's limited only to those bullet points?
That's my concern. It's only limited to those, Bob.
I hear what you're saying, and my concern is, like you said, it says the same thing.
Except that it broadens it.
Except that it broadens it.
It sounds like the only thing that we can terminate her for are these issues here, and she blows up the town hall.
Yes.
And the verbiage that they put in just broadens it. I don't think that would cause her any grief, Bob.
Okay.
All right.
All right, so, but I still...
It's neatly worded.
I still don't want to base it on Pullman's copy here.
And I don't either. We've worked for an hour and a half to word spitting this thing, we should go where we agree to. You agree?
We being, includes me, right?
Go in.
There were a lot of questions. I don't know about, there were a number of hours granted, there were whether we should preload things, there were things that Jason said and took back. I don't know what the changes are specifically, I'd want to know that.
Am I supposed to read it again?
Um, sure.
Why don't you go through the changes that you had?
My change, the changes that I understand now would be all the changes in section three, the 35 hours in section five.
And in section one.
And in section one. Registered to certified on page seven. And then changing all good cause to just, all good cause to cause, and then you want all of section...
So here we go. In section one, we're striking the sentence that says employee shall work 35 hours per week and take an unpaid one-hour wage. That isn't in line with the FLSA. In section two, I don't know if we agreed on this, but I would still like to add the severability clause. And that's by mutual consent, you know, nobody owes anybody anything if everybody walks, or if anybody walks.
That's a nothing.
Yeah.
You should not object to that.
That is a nothing, it's just another protection for the, that's boilerplate. Anybody have any objections with that?
Do you, Bob?
No, I don't have a party with that.
So we would add that as subsection E.
What, I want to ask a question. In this markup, what do the blue underline, double underline things, what are they?
So when you do track changes, the underlying is new?
Yeah, okay.
In section 3A1, the Board of Selectmen terminates the town treasurer without having cause to do so before expiration? That was another one of those protections that we had talked about, without having cause to do so?
Do you object to that, Bob?
Yeah, I would.
You do object to it?
Sure. Because I think the more changes you make, the more confused that she's going to get, and I think it's the same without it. This addition corresponds to the language removed for cause below. Without addition, it would be unclear whether a termination for cause would still entitle the person 60-day severance. This makes it clear that she would not get severance for termination for cause. Okay, I'll buy that.
So we're going to include after treasurer in 3A1 without having cause to do so? We all agreed to adopt section 3A2 and those changes which just summarize the good cause provision, correct?
Takes out the specifics.
Correct.
Did that bother you, Bob?
I'm willing to accept it, I don't like it.
So based on my notes from there, everything in section three with those changes is now complete. Section four. You guys didn't like the notion of giving the Board of Finance a role in the salary, so that's not in. So I have no other changes for section four or five. I still think section six conflicts with section two, but you guys didn't seem to bite on that either.
Performance evaluation, should something be put in, that there will be written goals?
No, that'll, that...
We have that in section 4B.
Yeah, we'll have, we will have performance evaluations, but, and it mentions that in the contract, and I'm not sure exactly where, but I...
4B.
4B, okay.
That's a given.
Yep, it is.
You can have goals to have an evaluation.
So I had a number of notes on 7A, but I think they were all notes for discussion, and nothing was incorporated there. Nobody have any comments on 7B? 7C, we talked about the striking termination order. 7C, we talked about the striking termination for, and I honestly cannot remember where we landed on that. Oh, accumulated vacation pay, yeah, that, we decided that that was, that was probably appropriate under state law. 7D was accrued sick time. I don't think anybody had any other changes or questions there, nor with 7E, which dealt with the approval of personal days. If anybody's, Andy, if you see anything I'm missing, because I'm going through this.
No, that's okay, I'm following.
We did agree to strike Section 7H.
Correct.
For consistency with Section 1.
Page 1.
Yeah. I don't know that there were any changes in 8.
No.
No changes in 9. Or, I don't have any other changes on that page.
Is this one typo, employees capitalized, it should be a small, small E, but, you know...
Where?
I'll have to, I'll make it consistent throughout because it's...
Next to last line. Therefore, on which the employee, it's a capitalized, it should be small E.
Okay.
A nothing.
On page 7, there were the typos in Section 15A and in 17. And we struck in Section 17, registered or, for consistency.
They get certified.
Yep. Yeah, certified's already there. You just remove the registered, please.
That's a bold change.
Yep.
Okay, so, if you would, we're going to make?
Just a test.
Okay. Section 3, we're going to strike all the bullet points under where it talks about good cause, and we're also going to cross out good and just call it cause. Section 6, Jason does say it conflicts with Section 2, but we're not going to take that back. 7H, we're going to just cross out because of the FLSA. Section 11, oh, I circled that because the E is capitalized. Section 15A, there's a typo by the First Selectmen and duly authorized. Section 17, any and all notices required or permitted to be given, so I'm adding both thee.
Mm-hmm.
And that's it.
Take out, take out registered.
And then registered, I have that actually noted. Take out registered and certified.
Okay, Section 1, there's a sentence to take out.
Just that one line.
Is the 35 hours.
Yeah, and then also that's in Section 5, too.
Yep.
Okay. Okay.
This, this, just to flash for a second on this good cause thing, was that put in by you? Was that a contract we had in existence? That part?
I don't remember.
No.
That was put in by Amy?
She said no.
Okay.
Who was it put in by?
Amy.
Okay. Just as a reminder, when you speak with her, is that when she spoke about, in their Charter, they are required to send to all taxpayers the budget detail 10 days in advance of the town meeting to approve the budget. That's a Charter requirement. She explained to us that they have there, which I would like to see here. And the same thing for our Charter, we have to have it saying this, we can't have it saying good cause. So she has a frame of reference that this is just not arbitrary. You get what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do. And I was thinking, this is, a thought I had about this, and when you were talking about, the only, the section that worries me is Section 3, by changing Section 3. If she doesn't go along with the changes to Section 3, does that mean we don't hire her, or what are we going to do?
I don't think that should be a deal breaker.
So then how are we going to handle that?
You go with what, you go with what we just talked about.
If, if she rejects it, we should revisit the contract.
That's okay.
And, we're the contracting agent. So if she rejects it, it should come back to us.
Okay. And she's going to be here April 1st, April 2nd, that's a Monday. So when can we meet to reevaluate it?
Monday night, if there's a need.
If there's what?
Monday night, if there is a need.
Okay.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay. And then we'll say 7 o'clock, is that the time?
Yep.
Can we do it earlier?
Okay, we can.
6?
Yeah.
6?
We have a...
But I think we, we have, that's a special meeting, though, so we have to do it on Tuesday, don't we?
We don't have to, no, we can do a special meeting when we want.
I have to go with 24 hours' notice.
Right, so you notice it today, and then you cancel it if we don't need it.
Good thinking. Thank you very much. Okay, what do we, what time, 6, you said?
6.
Okay, so, does your amendment, does your amendment to the motion stand? Are you comfortable with it?
Yeah.
Okay.
So now we need to vote on the amendment, and then we're on the contract.
So further discussion on the amendment?
No.
Alls in favor?
Yes.
Okay, and then we'll vote on the motion to appoint, what did I say? Motion to appoint Amy O'Toole as town treasurer pending successful completion of the employment, the drug screening, and signing of the amended agreement. Or I, I said amended agreement, but it just says employment agreement. So, discussion? Alls in favor?
It should say the agreement.
Agreed.
We know it's amended.
Yeah, okay. Alls in favor?
All right.
Okay. Good.
I'm opposed.
Okay.
Salary, pension, accrual, time, you know, the meter. It's a better contract.
So now we'll go into executive session if we may. I'll take a vote. Do we vote on the executive session?
Yeah.
Okay, all those, I'll take a motion.
Motion to go into executive session.
Second, all approved?
All right.